Okay. I'm sorry, Laura, did you read the announcement?
Because we're tired.
Yeah, but it's still a virtual, we're supposed to have a, we're still supposed to...
It's listed as hybrid.
Every meeting is hybrid, so we don't read it anymore unless it's full remote.
Right, if we were all not here, then we'd have to read. But because Mike, Bonnie and I are here, it's listed as hybrid.
Right, but we still have to go by the rules of a remote participation meeting then, so that means we just have to vote with a roll call.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, so to start, we're jumping right into our executive session, so let me just... I move to enter into executive session for purpose three, Master in a Lot, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Mass Coalition of Police Union, FLCIO, Local Men and Permanent Firefighters Union, Local 4936IAFF, Mendon Town Hall Union, Local 272 Mendon Highway Union, and for purpose two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Police Chief Fire Chief Town Administrator, Finance Director. Discussion in open session may be detrimental to the bargaining position. Roll call vote is needed. We will reconvene in an open session.
Second thought.
I'm like, is this frozen?
Our brains are all frozen. Our brains are all frozen. All right.
Okay, all in favor?
Tini, Ohio.
We're jumping on the executive session link right now.
All right, we'll be back.
Okay.
Am I leaving, am I going somewhere else, Tim?
Yeah, we're going, we're doing the executive session first, so we're leaving this and going to the other link.
Wait, wait, do I have that link?
You do. Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right, bye.
Bye.
All right, here we go. We are back. So let me pull up my agenda. All right, discuss FY22 and FY23 salary adjustments for appointed non-union full-time and part-time employees. Kim, do you want to have a little discussion first? Is she in here? Kim's not back in yet. Please hold. There she is.
The meeting that gets the link that gets created on the calendar invite is not the same link that's on the agenda. So it gets confusing. So we try to go to the meet the calendar. It sends you to a different meeting, which is where Mike Jones is. I gotta send him the agenda. Go ahead.
What I said was, Kim, would you like to discuss the non-union increases?
Sure. Hold on. Great. Earlier this year, the select board approved 2% salary increases for settled union and non-union employees, either contractually or through cost of living adjustments due to a stronger than anticipated financial position and as a token of gratitude for the hard work and dedication of town employees. The select board is considering giving an additional 2% to non-union employees. This means that if an employee has already received 2% increase due to an amount earlier this year, they'll receive an additional 2%. If they've not yet received a 2% increase, they'll get 4%. This would be a one-time payment issued at the end of the fiscal year based upon base pay. And then FY23 rates would be increased to reflect this adjustment. To be eligible for the increase, employees must be on the payroll as of June 30th and the increase will not be applied to stipends or overtime.
Okay. Comments from the board? Actually, the board is muted. There you go.
I don't have any comments or really questions or anything other than everybody just still did a great job. We had a better year than we thought we were going to happen. It's nice to be able to do this.
Yes, I agree. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
All right. I move to increase the FY22 2% salary increases that were awarded this year. Cost of living, sorry, contract relooking cost of living adjustments for appointed non-union employees to 4%. An employee has already received an increase to the potential contract, they will receive an additional 2%. An employee has not yet received a 2% increase, they will receive 4%. The adjustment in FY22 will be issued as a one-time payment at the end of the fiscal year based on the base pay. To be eligible for this increase, an employee must be a regular full-time or regular part-time employee. He must be on the payroll as of June 30, 2022. This 2% increase will not be applied to stipends, rulings. And I authorize, I authorize the town administrator to to increase the base salary by 2% for FY23 and then the contracts to reflect the adjustments.
Okay, Dan.
Wait, I think we also need something in there about modifications of existing agreements for non-union employees.
That's what I said at the beginning, not us.
No.
No. I said for non-union employees.
Okay, but I need authorization in order to, okay, fine.
I'm sorry.
The MOAs for existing.
I authorize the town administrator to negotiate with non-union. Right? Is that what you're looking to add in there?
Yes. Well, what I need is, I need authorization from the board to order to be able to modify the existing agreements that are in place with non-union employees. So just add that to your motion.
Aren't there multiple motions after this that identify that?
No.
Well, we have them on the sheet, right?
Okay, maybe. Okay, go ahead.
So what are the motions we're making after this motion then? Different than what you're asking for?
I don't know what the different motions are. I don't have that in front of me. Just keep going. I'm sure it's fine. I'm just being overly difficult because I have four existing contracts in place that I have to amend. That's all. For non-union.
So hold on, but I've got Mike here to correct me if I'm wrong. So Mike is, I'm going to just put, so it says, and I authorize the town administrator to negotiate with non-union employees to increase the base salary rate for the same group of employees by 2% of FY23 and to amend any contract reflecting the adjustments. Is that correct?
I think that covers it. If you've got employment contracts that are already in place, the motion is to increase those by the amounts that you've referenced.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to have to have you guys come back again tomorrow morning.
Okay, so what we do have on here on our motion list after this one would be to discuss or to vote on individual contracts, but I think that covers that.
Just for clarity sakes, it might be good to just list the contracts that you are going to amend so that it's covered and identified.
Okay. Police chief, fire chief, finance director, and town administrator as listed on the agenda.
That's part of the motion.
There you go. Right.
Okay.
You will specify police chief, fire chief, town administrator, and
Finance director.
Finance director.
Right. Okay.
Do you want to reread that last part? I authorize the, well. Sorry.
Good.
Part of the motion.
It's clarified.
Yes. Mike seconded it. Dan Byer has his hand up.
I just wanted to know, will this be retroactive? Or is it just for the remaining month of the year? Just because I know that question's going to come up.
But for FY2022, so the whole first year of the contract, right?
Yeah.
No contract.
Right.
Right, non-union.
This last fiscal year. This is non-union employees. Right.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Okay, all in favor?
Any or I? Or all or I?
Real I. Okay, next. So on our agenda, we have consider police, police chief contract, consider fire chief contract. That's included and we're good. We don't need to. Okay, we do that.
We have to vote on the police, the brand-new police chief contract and the blandrews' fire and chief contract.
I mean, I am to approve the police chief contract from 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2027. Second.
Further discussion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Any or I? Or all or I?
Real I.
Congratulations.
Consider fire chief contract.
I am to approve the fire chief contract from 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2027. Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Any or I? Or all or I?
Real I. Discuss HRO hours.
Right. So as you know, our new HRO person is working out great. She's been really fantastic. And as we mentioned, we have a little bit of money available at the end of this fiscal year. So she is a full-time employee at 25 hours, but she has some additional capacity over the summer. And so I just would like to be able to give her up to 10 hours a week if she's available to start tackling some of the things. As we've had an outrageous amount of hiring. And so that's really been, but you know, we have projects like a personnel policy and all those things that we really desperately need to get done. And so I'd really like to be able to give her a little, a couple more hours to get us to the end of the year.
With the temporary increase, the HRO hours up to 10 additional hours per week. Second. We don't, how long do you intend to increase her hours for? How long?
Well, this covered, well, I'm asking for a transfer amount soon at the end of this agenda that covers this fiscal year. And then I will potentially for the, we'll see as we get closer to the fall. As you know, she spent a lot of her, her other job is coaching. And so those school things will die down in the next week or so. So she'll have some additional capacity just for the summer.
Does this motion, does this motion just goes to the end of FY22 and then we'll have to do it again for next fiscal year?
No, but the transfer that I'm asking for only goes to the end of FY22 and that's on the transfer sheet that's coming up.
Now, I guess that's what I was trying to tie.
I, I, I would suggest that there's a date on here so that the conversation can be had again.
Okay.
Because it's just, it's a little arbitrary to me to just say.
I'd have it, well, I would have it end in August. I can always float until then. And if we, you know, just in case, if she works on or off or, you know, some weeks or whatever. I want to take advantage of the time while she has it.
Well, the transfer you're doing is just for this year, right?
Right. But we won't, we won't be in any sort of deficit position by August that we would need any kind of action.
I'm going to amend this to, to June 30th, what's June 30th? June 30th, and then we'll vote it again if you need, if you need to keep going.
Okay.
There's a second there.
Second amendment, yeah. Did you?
All in favor?
Any or I? Or all or I?
Real I. Discuss year-end transfers.
You should have a document that is somewhere around you. So as I do every year, I've gone through and I've identified additional amounts that I think are available for possible transfers for needs. I have put together a list. Um, I have put together a list of transfers from all departments. The only, the one caveat that's missing from this list is snow and ice at this moment. I have an estimate, but not a final. Um, I have approximately, I found approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of possible areas for potential transfers if needed. These transfers will, um, are about two hundred and, what, let's say, two hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. Um, coming from all different sorts of sources, um, I could read through each of them if you'd like. Um.
What about it?
Yes?
We have it, we printed it out.
Okay, perfect, great, but what I really just need you to know is that after these transfers, we still have about a hundred sixty five thousand dollars available potentially, which, uh, which includes the FinCom reserve, um, some, uh, some money in highway. Because I think we're gonna have a snow and ice deficit based on conversation with Alan, the invoices aren't in yet, but I think we're gonna have one of about eighty thousand dollars. So I'm holding some of these until we get those actual invoice processed, but this should cover everything else, um, for this year.
So you think that it's, it's strongly possible that we'll be able to do into departmental transfers to cover the snow and ice deficit, so we won't have a deficit?
Hundred percent. That's a hundred percent going to happen.
Okay. I'll accept a motion.
Can I just read the list real quick or do you want to?
You can, you can read it.
Uh, town accountant expenses, hold on. Yeah, right, I can something. So these are the following transfers suggested. From treasure collector banking services to town accountant expenses, seventy thousand four hundred and five. From dispatch salary to dog officer, twelve hundred ninety nine dollars. Dispatch expenses to street lights, ten thousand dollars. Reserve salary negotiations to unemployment, thirty five thousand dollars. Okay, so explain to me, as I'm reading these, Kim, I've got from, from departments and two departments, are these final numbers? Okay, they're just, in other words, they're different amounts into different areas. So the, there's two hundred eighty seven thousand nine hundred and four, um, in transfers coming out of these other. But the, but the amount that's being transferred in total is two eighty seven nine oh four.
Correct, it's not a direct, it's, they're not directly correlated.
So, all right, let me read it this way, here in the areas, treasure collector banking services, seventy thousand four oh five. Dispatch salary, thirty two thousand one hundred and six. Dispatch expenses, eight thousand five hundred forty three. Reserve for salary negotiation, sixteen thousand five sixty two. Health insurance, fifty six thousand nine thirteen. Selectment miscellaneous, five thousand twenty five dollars. Selectment hearing, twenty two hundred seventy six dollars. Selectment insurance, eleven hundred fifty five dollars. Conservation salaries, five thousand. Conservation training, one thousand. Planning board hearings, thirty eight thousand four nineteen. Building inspection wages, five thousand. Building inspection training, twenty five hundred. And new used equipment, forty three thousand dollars for a total transfer out of two hundred eighty seven nine hundred and four. And then the transfers into the bond account to come up with these numbers. Town account expenses, seven thousand four oh five. Dog office, twelve hundred ninety nine dollars. Street lights, ten thousand dollars. Unemployment, thirty five thousand dollars. Label, fifty thousand dollars. Police expenses, thirty eight thousand dollars. Finance salaries, twenty six hundred six dollars. Town hall salaries, thirty four thousand eighty. Police salary is twenty two thousand eight seventy. Fire salaries, fourteen thousand four fifty one. Iris salaries, four thousand three hundred fifty. Council on aging salaries, one thousand one hundred forty five dollars. And library salaries, two thousand one hundred ninety eight dollars for the same amount of two hundred eighty seven nine hundred and four dollars transferred. Second.
I don't really think there was a motion there, well.
That was my motion.
Okay.
Transfer those amounts.
All right, all in favor?
Any or I, we're all in I.
Real I. Award RFP, go ahead.
Just want to add before we go, I know we are in a hurry, but I just want to talk about, a lot of our available funds came from the regionalization of dispatch, which was really clutch for this year. Some of the additional funding we had was due to a grant that we received for planning. And so our planner was also, was fully subsidized by the grant. And so we were able to utilize some of that in order to cover some of these deficits.
Thank you. Uh, award RFP for Morrison Drive. Jack is on.
Actually gonna step down from this discussion.
Okay.
Okay, um, kind of just to remind everybody, uh, the last time you guys met or one time that you met, um, we had a small committee made up of the town administrator, town council and the finance officer and myself, we went through the two proposals. And if you recall, only one was a valid proposal because the minimum, um, bid had to be a, at or above the appraised value. Appraised value was five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We received one valid bid that was from, um, I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, Route Eight Five Realty Corp. Um, for five hundred and seventy one thousand seventeen dollars and seventeen cents. And they wish to do, um, commercial and professional offices. And that's the committee's recommendation.
Okay, so I do have a couple of questions, Jack.
Sure.
If you could clarify for me, does that, if we sell this property, does this carve out the easement for the, for Applewood that was supposed to, we were trying to set aside?
Yes, I I've been up there many times with Ann and some others. In fact, the access to the Applewood land will not even be involved in this property. It's going to be on the cul de sac and technically where the fire department's property is.
Okay, great, so that's not a concern, I would just want to make sure that we didn't lose that.
Yeah.
And then I guess this question.
One other thing, Mr. Chair. If, if I'm wrong about that or something changes along the way, in the RFP, it says they have to provide that. So before you sign the data line or whoever signs the data line down the road, we'll make sure that they either provide it or that I'm correct, which I, I know I am, about the, uh, other avenues they're gonna take.
Okay, great. And then I think this question might be for Cindy. Um, we are, our motion will be to, to sell the property for the five seventy one and change. Um, if, you know, there was some, some language in the cover letter that, that was talking about a different number, but we have to, we can sell it for no less than that amount. We will receive no less than that amount in order for this transaction to take place, is that correct? Cindy, you're on mute.
Yes, you are agreeing to award them the bid based on their actual bid response, not any information that was presented in a cover letter and not in the bid response documents themselves. And all of the other stuff that we aren't going along with was in the cover letter.
Right.
And if we're just making it perfectly clear that that's not at all relevant. So if you don't want the award based on what you gave us, you don't take the award.
Thank you.
Thank you, but we're, we're awarding, we would be awarding the bid of five hundred seventy one thousand seven dollars, seventy seven cents, no less.
Correct.
Correct. Correct. Dan?
Yeah, I'm just, I guess I'm just curious, what is the proposed timeline of this eventual sale? I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff it has to go through, but.
Well, I guess my question to piggyback onto that is that, that property is being used right now to house some town equipment, is that correct?
Yes.
That's not news, though.
No, I know, see, but my question, but it's a valid question. If we, are we gonna have a place to relocate that to now or will we before, before this sells and closes?
Yeah, Duncan Chapman here, I'm the broker for the town, just to talk a little bit about the timeline. Uh, this would typically be, um, you know, we'll develop a letter of intent with the buyer. Typically, we would have sixty days, uh, due diligence for the buyer to do his due diligence. Um, in this case, I think the buyer's probably done quite a bit of that. They could ask for a reduced period of time. But again, we're gonna propose, I would propose sixty days. If the town wanted to give more, it really would be up to the buyer. And then typically, it's within thirty days of the due diligence that the close would be scheduled.
And, and I'll add, uh, in the RFP, it states sixty days to negotiate and finalize everything. Um, in this case, in, well, again, it's in the intent, it's in the cover letter, so they may have other plans, but they say that they're not gonna utilize the building right away. So there's no building permit needed or planning board permit at this time. So it may be a straight sale within those timelines.
But my concern is if once we sell it, the town equipment should be moved out of there. So the question is, Dan, do you have a plan to store this elsewhere?
If I, if I could jump in for a second, um, because of what Jack just said, that the owner will not be utilizing the building right away, we could put into the agreement that the, uh, uh, owner would lease it back to the town for one dollar a month. Um, uh, up to whatever you guys felt you needed, you know, up to ninety days or, or, or not. But, uh, you know, if you've got a place for the stuff, that would be better, just get it out of there.
I agree with that, Dan.
And I, yeah, I mean, I guess at this point, I'm looking for direction from the board, I guess, give me a date. We'll have to start the discussion and come up with a plan, but we're probably looking at a minimum of, you know, it could take a month to make sure everything's moved and stored and loaded up, I, you know, right now it's just being.
So I'm asking, I'm asking you the question, right now, do you have a place to put this stuff?
Um, like, right now, tomorrow, no, I think we have to have some conversations and come up with a plan. I think it is a solvable problem, I don't think it's.
So, so Dan, what do you have, the truck, which could be parked outside, but then besides that, what else, what is?
The truck, the trailer, multiple extra mowers, a whole bunch of miscellaneous equipment that's in storage, old lockers that we either need to dispose of. I mean, there's a lot of stuff which we can, I guess I just, I need a date, if you're telling me get everything out tomorrow, well, no. Right.
You're gonna, you're gonna add September.
So what you're saying is you, you could have it all open someplace else, sixty days?
Um.
Well, no.
Yeah, I think, I, I just, it would be help, you know, if we could give us time to get our seasonal crew started, so I have extra hands to help actually move stuff, that would be helpful, you know, if, if, you know, we could pick a target date, so plan on vacating by June first, maybe, July first. I'll start the conversations and come up with a plan to get everything out, I just, I need to know what to plan for, I guess, so it's sixty days.
I can say December to be out by July first.
That's a, Jack, go ahead, what did you say?
Well, that's an easy date because that's within the sixty days. Where he goes, that's between him and you guys.
We'll sort it out, I just, I guess that's what I'm looking for, so we will plan on vacating that building on July one and I'll send some emails and come up with a plan.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to award a Morrison Drive, um, RFP to Route Eight Five Realty Corp. with an amount of five hundred seventy one thousand seven dollars and seventy seven cents.
Second. All in favor?
We're all in I.
Real I, any abstain?
Any or I.
Okay.
So, I will draft a letter, um, have Cindy make sure it's correct and we'll go from there.
Very good. Then next we have, um, RFP for Milford Street.
Yep, eh, if you recall, um, we had two proposals, both are valid. A minimum, uh, the appraised value was three hundred thousand dollars for that parcel. We have a, the solar company, Amoresco, who is in the back of the parcel or back of the parcel that exists there now, they are offering to lease it for up to twenty, twenty five years at forty thousand dollars a year. Um, the other proposal is from Patriot Holdings, who wishes to put up a storage facility of approximately a hundred thousand square feet. They are going to give back about seven acres to the town conservation commission or whoever holds the Brook conservation land there and forty thousand dollars to develop a trail system or, or the town can use that money for what it wants on the open space. Um, we tried to compare apples and oranges with leasing versus, um, selling. And if I recall, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was, uh, the leasing was anywhere from one and a half million to two, probably closer to one and a half million, and that includes a payment in lieu of taxes of about thirty grand a year. And, um, the sale, uh, would bring in about two and a half million. And that includes the forty thousand, the sale for four hundred thousand dollars. And then the taxes on a hundred thousand square feet of storage. And I know, and I'll say it again, because I know it's important to me as your planner, that whoever you choose, um, we will make sure that it's screened properly and that it's respectful to Route Sixteen and, um, and it's softened up. It'll be a little more difficult with the solar panels, a little, lot less difficult with the storage panels. And, uh, the committee had no recommendation because I think it's really a use and a philosophy type of issue that, a policy issue that you have to decide here.
Yeah, and just one, one thing on the pros and cons, that we had provided information potentially to be used at town meeting. The, obviously, the self storage would go a lot quicker, probably be, you know, in construction within nine months. The solar could take, you know, eighteen to twenty four to be approved. Now, it's likely that it would be approved, but it's not guaranteed that it would be approved. Um, in addition to that, on the, uh, self storage, they can, the land that's gonna be given back, seven plus acres, is in fact contiguous to muddy Brook conservation land. So, you know, it's not separated, it's contiguous, so conservation and the town, you know, with the, with the parking lot in the past have additional, you know, land to play with that is in fact contiguous, so just a couple of points, uh, on each.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, it's a good point because I imagine any sale will be, um, contingent upon obtaining a building permit or electrical permit as far as solar, and solar is a little, it takes a long time. And that's, and, uh, and the storage facility would have to go in front of the planning board, obviously.
So I guess my other, a question that just popped into my mind about the sale of the land for the storage facility. What, what if we sell the land and then all of a sudden they decide, I actually want to do something else with it?
We would, uh, specify in the agreement the use of the sale. Um, we would absolutely do that. Now, to your point, which is a correct point, you know, they, anybody that owns the property could in fact do something with it, you know, by right. But I think in this case, particularly where they bid, this is a great add to their portfolio of self storage facilities. Um, to put, to specify self storage facility of a certain size, up to a hundred thousand feet on approximately five acres per the site plan, you know, all of that, we can try to, you know, box them in.
Okay.
Yeah, you can box them in as much as you want, I mean, but I think these guys are pros, they're all over the place, Patriot Holdings, they have a big portfolio.
Great.
I don't see them building something else, but.
Okay.
It's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak on, for myself, and then I'll open it to the other board members. And I feel that, uh, the sale of the land makes. I feel that, uh, the sale of the land makes more sense for the community at this point. We've been trying to offload this business land so that it can be. You know, a part of the free market and, and we're not holding on to all this, this developable property. So, I'm leaning towards the sale for the use of a storage facility.
Look quickly at this, they're, they're actually expanding the size of adjacent conservation here in San, right?
Yes.
Good question. Ann, I, I see you're on here, um, and I guess a question for Ann and Jack. When we're working through this with them, or maybe it's more in the planning stage when it gets to the planning board. Can we ask them for some parking that would, would give us some parking net down near the conservation land, that would allow people access to that a little better?
I'm glad you brought that up, Lonnie, because they actually offer it in the proposal. I forget how many parking spaces, but four parking spaces, I believe, something to that effect. And one last thing, and it's a minor thing, is they've agreed to maintain the access road. To the solar panels, which currently is maintained by DPW.
There's a mistake and that there's a permanent easement that National Grid got access to, it's a bad cast.
Right.
Okay.
Award Thirty-Six, Milford Street, RFP, Patriot Holdings. Riches raised at four hundred thousand dollars. So, second.
All in favor?
Anyo, I, we're all in, I.
Real I. Excellent. Then we got one last thing. Consider appointment of finance clerk, municipal clerk. Thanks, Jack. Thanks, Duncan. Appreciate it.
Yes, guys.
Thanks so much.
Tracy, I call you to the position of finance clerk, municipal clerk, up to eighteen hours per week at a rate of twenty-four seventy-five. Second.
All in favor?
Anyo, I, we're all in, I.
Real I. Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Go ahead, second.
All in favor?
Anyo, I.
Sarah, we're all in, I, there?
Yeah, second.
Real I.
So, this is your official last, last meeting?
This is the actual last, last meeting.
Thanks, Mark.
Oh, wait, hold on. Oh, don't. It's, what it says, but this document I have, it said four cents four hundred thousand. Maybe this is not, that's what I'm thinking. Is it three or four hundred thousand?